... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Susie.
Councilmember Cantfield.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
I'm here. I want you to approve the concerted agenda for tonight with the whole regular and closed minutes from last meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Anybody need to change anything? Sue.
Councilmember Cantfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, citizen discussion, Friday, how do the agenda? All right, bold business, number four, item A is Werewolf Landfill. As soon as he's on the phone with Mike, we'll get him here in a minute.
Hello, are you still there? Okay, put you back on speaker.
It's Halloween, man. Places come from everywhere.
Okay.
Michael.
Yeah.
Werewolf Landfill.
Okay, excellent. With the assistance of BLDI Engineering, we have launched a filed our work plan with the Michigan Department of Great Lakes Environmental and Energy, otherwise known as DEAGLE, to address the issues of former werewolf landfills. Part of the project will be drilling nine monitoring wells outside approximately 16 feet below ground to determine whether or not contaminants have dissipated or migrated from what was found over 30 years ago. Part of the project, BLTI, gathered quotes on the city's behalf from multiple firms who address this type of drill, drilling. BLTI sought quotes from modeling firms. Sterns Drilling out of Duncan for little over $50,000. Pearson Drilling from Lake City for $28,399. Jobsite Services out of Bay City for $49,139. Matco out of Brockford for $52,358. Two other firms were unable to fit because they didn't have the equipment they got to do the project. So Pearson Drilling was significantly, significantly the wells better since there was a $20,000 difference between them and the second wells just better. I was concerned of the possibility of cost escalation in the project. BLTI stated that Pearson Drilling is capable and experienced in handling this type of work, and BLTI also stated they have not had experience and bad experience in the past with them. They also anticipate their work being completed in five days, with the second wells better anticipated completing the work in 10 days. If approved, we believe the wells really can begin before the winter months. As you're aware, BLTI also will be monitoring the project on behalf of the city. They provided an estimate for their cost services in the amount of $30,500. I believe Renee Hewitt from BLTI is there to answer any questions you may have. As you are aware, Werewolf was not budgeted this time, and we do go in entirely to cost to address it. In our fiscal year 2020 budget, we had about $70,000 in revenues unallocated, and we can use these funds before having to go into our near $1 million general fund reserve. That said, I do plan on seeking assistance from LCTD and the Memorial Fund as we go forward. I'm recommending the local city council approve for Pearson Drilling to drill nine wells that cost not to exceed $28,399.83. And for BLTI Engineering, four inspection services that cost not to exceed $30,300. I believe Renee's there if you have any questions for her.
I have one question.
Sure.
Is it, the state is requiring us to do nine wells because initially wasn't it going to be like three or something?
There's only three up there right now.
Oh.
Yeah.
So where do we think?
I thought it was five.
Sure. Yeah, so. We submitted a work plan to the state and we suggested nine wells because currently the three wells that are present are in several, there are various intervals across the site. So you've got none of the wells currently at the top of the water table, and that's where we usually find most contamination. So we have to go in and put shallower wells at the locations that are already there, and then the other deep wells across the site to get vertical extent and see what's there.
Okay. And then Pearson Drilling being $20,000 cheaper, but it looks like they're going to do it in five days instead of 10, so that's, with the $20,000 is coming into play?
Correct. And I did go back to a mentor and said, "All of this, and I said, 'Are you certain that you can complete it in this amount of time?'" You know, our other bidders were several days additional, and he was confident. So, and our experience is they're fast on site and they, they get it done, so.
With the same quality we would get?
Yes.
If the wells are able to be put in before things freeze up, will we get answers fast?
Yes, so after the wells are in, we will take soil samples while we're out there to profile this, the soil. And then after the wells settle, about three to six weeks later, we'll go in and do the groundwater sampling and see what we've got in the groundwater.
So sometime in January will be?
Yeah.
All right.
Any other question? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well then, I'll look for the first motion for Pearson Drilling, and then we'll do a separate motion for BLTI.
I move we accept the bid for Pearson Drilling.
Support discussion. Sue.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Cantfield.
Yes.
All right, then the BLTI engineering bid, not to exceed $30,300.
I'll make a motion for that.
I'll support.
Any discussion on that one? Sue.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Cantfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
All right, adult use marijuana ordinance is 19-06 and 19-07. Mike?
Yes, after reviewing, after several reviews of the proposed zoning and regulatory ordinance for adult use marijuana, we are now at a point of taking action on requirements for allowing this in the city of Lowell. As we discussed at our previous meeting during a review of the ordinance, we struck language pertaining to lighting. Another item involved during the development of the ordinance is we are restricting adult use marijuana facilities within 1,000 feet of schools and preschools. A question was raised regarding preschools which might be 1,000 feet from a facility in the city but happen to be a neighbor in Lowell Township. There is a preschool that is approximately 1,300 feet from the city limits. That being said, I research the question. If a municipality would like, they would make it a requirement to the ordinance if they so choose. After discussing this with Justice Swann, I ask for this provision to be added to the ordinance restricting facilities within 1,000 feet of a preschool in Lowell Township. If this is something you don't, you don't particularly think is needed to be there or necessary, we can strike this from the ordinance. The zoning ordinance ensures the application for facilities must be approved by a special land use permit. Applicants to receive open facilities in the city must show they meet standards set forth in the ordinance prior to approval from the planning commission, and they must comply once the building is operational. Zoning ordinance 19-06 and the regulatory ordinance 19-07 have interrupted and meet the concerns of the planning commission and city council on their appropriate venue. Once approved, we will get signed in place. Beginning on November 1st, 2019, the Michigan Marijuana Agency will be accepting applications for adult use facility licenses in Michigan. By approving these ordinances, the city of Lowell is formally allowing facilities for adult use marijuana within the city limits. As that look at seeking facilities in the city of Lowell preliminary approved by the MRA, the city will be able to begin the process of approving these facilities in the state of Michigan with these ordinances. I recommend the Lowell City Council approve ordinance 19-06, which is the zoning ordinance, and 19, and ordinance 19-07, which is the regulatory ordinance as presented.
I would, I want that township thing to stay in there. It's trying to protect the school, it shouldn't matter where the school is located. I think that daycare up by impact is the only one, anyways, that's close enough that it wouldn't be affected.
No, I think it's that preschool right there by Subway and?
Yeah, yeah, but it's 13, I think it was, ended up being 1388.
I think it's good leaving it in also because it also sets precedence for the township. If they are looking at that, they need to make sure that they're at least 1,000 feet from the city line as well. That lies on the future, personally.
All right, I agree. Cliff?
Um, no. Clarification, I was, I agree that we should leave that in for the schools. Anybody that's applying to have a facility in Lowell has to go through the state first, right? So they don't even get to us unless?
The state, yep.
That is correct.
And for the first two years, they have to be existing medical marijuana license holders. Which is?
Correct. We will not, we will not, we will not do anything with their application until we've proven through the state that they are, that they are approved, because they call it a two-step process from the state. So start with the state with their background investigation, and then they'll come to us, and we'll do our zoning and our regulatory requirements. And then from there, once those two steps are met, then the state will issue the light.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mike?
All right, I'll look for a motion then for the zoning ordinance 19-06.
I'll make that motion to approve ordinance 19-06.
Support.
All right, Sue.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Cantfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
All right, and then the motion for the regulatory ordinance 19-07.
I make the motion that we approve ordinance 19-07.
I'll support. Sue.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Cantfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
All right, item C, city income tax, Mike?
We have our last informational meeting last Wednesday, about 20 people attended. I thought, I thought it went very well. I think the people who were there have an understanding of what's being asked, and I think they have an understanding as to why we're asking it. We will have one more, one more informational mailer going out with the water bill for this month, and then we're two weeks, we're just over, we're two weeks away from our next, from the election, so we'll know where we stand then, but that's, that's where we're at. One item of note I should mention to you is as we're doing, as we're talking for our audit right now, I believe, I looked at our, I looked at our fund reserves and the major street funds, and I believe there's funds available for us next, between, between next summer to be able to do Howard and Suffolk streets. So we are looking at those regardless of whether or not the tax passes. We are, we are looking at those two streets for, to see if we can work on them, and we will, once we get more information, we will come back to the council on it. But that's all I have on the income tax at this point.
All right, any questions for Mike on the income tax? All right, fire authority proposal, which is me. So we have to vote on that proposal for the fire authority meeting next Monday. Virgin's Township approved it unanimously. Lowell Township was discussing and voting tonight, and we are discussing and voting tonight. Two of the three municipalities have to approve it, and then the third one, even if they don't approve it, they're on board, whatever. In a discussion with Jerry Hale about stomaching this proposal, I guess, Jerry and Carl Blau and I added, well Carl Blau and I added a Lou Bender rider on this proposal, so if the fire department consultant gets brought on, our board gets Lou Bender brought on too, because we gotta get our stuff in order before we go around telling other people what to do. And that board's dysfunctional right now, there's no nice way to say it. And you were here when Lou came, and the very first time we were dysfunctional too, so.
We still are.
We were having fun being this much out now.
We're organized.
Yeah, that's right, we're fun now, we weren't fun before. So I'm still against it, I guess, overall, but I don't have a single bad thing to say about Lou Bender, and if that board's ever going to be of any benefit to that department, it's going to be, Lou's going to be the guy who made it, so. That consultant, what were we at, 29th and change, right?
Twenty and change.
Twenty and change?
Yeah, 64 hundred miles.
And then I talked with Lou Bender last Thursday, and after he was done yelling at me, he, for not calling him earlier, he said after the first of the year. That's when the fire authority chair and vice chair and treasurer and secretary and all that are nominated, so when he comes to facilitate, he'll be doing it with that power structure that's going to sit for the whole year. So he's not doing it now in November, then everything changes in January, he comes back, we pay him twice.
What, if you're trying to remember, with the 20,000 total?
Yes, divided by three, yeah. It was 64, I think it's some change per municipality. Lou Bender is two grand plus travel, so he was on, looking at his schedule with light and power as well, and after the first of the year will be time for us to use them again. So I thought if we brought them back in January and put it on rider to that consultant, we can each pay our two grand, and then light and power, and the fire authority and the city can split the trap. So, and DPW will probably use them again too, I'm sure while he's here, but we can get them, light and power during the day, fire authority at night, DPW during the day, city at night.
You can.
Hmm? I know a guy who owns an inn right down the street, I was going to talk to him.
Go into your room for me, it's a good call.
So, oh yeah, Greg has one too. I was talking about. So I don't, I'll answer any questions you guys have about the consultant, and then we can vote on whether to do it. And if you don't want to have the Lou Bender rider, you don't have to, but I thought Jerry Hale had a really good idea, and Carl Blau is the township representative on the board, and him and I discussed it, and it's about time that that board gets, starts being functional. It's just, I mean, we're not doing half the stuff we should be doing, and I know a guy who can fix that too, he's called Lou Bender. So, and Greg was at the meeting, I hope you have anything to add?
No, you suggested Lou Bender there, and I think it's a great idea, we're all volunteers at a lot of these jobs, amateurs, and we can use a little guidance on how to work better together, and Lou's very good at that.
I just think that the scope of work, they could have defined it a little tighter, not this broad band of things that maybe somewhere in the, in the numbers calculation, to me it seems like, okay, that may make sense if we want full-time now or redo it full-time later, how's that going to work out, but I think I'd have been more comfortable with just looking at, is it narrowing up the scope and looking at it a little tighter than the broad band of things that they're looking at?
And that was my initial opinion, and still my opinion, I agree 100%, and it was Lowell Township's opinion, but the motion Virgin's made was the proposal as is.
Wasn't there a 15-point checklist or of items that they were asked, when we sent it out for three proposals?
Yep.
Here are the 15 items that we want to review, and that's what they based their quote on?
Yeah, that was also only put together by one member of the board and an attorney. The other person on the board who helped put that together is not even on the board anymore. And it was, it's just another thing that should have been done with the whole board. And if it had happened, you know, when that board was in a better place, it probably would have been, but I had a lot of concerns with it, I think 90%, and Steve was at the meeting too, and he brought up a couple of things that weren't even in the proposal. So to call it a comprehensive proposal and then have police chief come and put holes in it doesn't bode very well for the research that the board did, but.
Right, I think he added a couple items that weren't in this, joint services, forget the term board.
Public safety.
Public safety, where police and fire are combined, but it's just because we aren't considering going to a full-time department, that is going to cost a couple hundred thousand dollars a year to begin with, if we end up, there's other costs that could increase that, and this is a 10-year program at the minimum, we're talking a couple million dollars, and we're in a tight financial situation already to spend $6,000 just to get some professional opinion and guidance on what would be best, but I think the fire authority will make the decisions, this is just a report that has suggestions.
Right, exactly.
And I just think we could, I mean, Mike, you're a lot more involved in this stuff, I know nothing about the fire authority, for us to try to ask about things.
Yeah, there's some benefit in that proposal, for sure, but it's a couple of different line items, and I would have liked personally to see how much just those line items cost, but we're past that, you know what I mean, and that, and that's, you know, and I, I'm adamantly vocally against it, I have been from the beginning, but if it gets us Lou Bender, then.
You're adamantly against it, but you're asking us to vote for it?
I'm asking you to vote on it.
Well, my take is, is you're investing $20,000 for a report, and for that kind of money, I'm expecting that we're going to get some pretty good results to make some good decisions, that board is going to make some good decisions on what they're looking for. And that's pass that on so that?
And that's why we need Lou Bender, because that board is not making good decisions with the information we're given right now, and he's the guy who can correct it. So if we're going to do it, and we're all going to stomach it, okay.
So Lou's coming in to help analyze the report?
No, the consultant is going to analyze the department. Lou Bender is going to fix the fire authority board so that when the report comes back, we can be productive in enacting what we just paid $20,000 instead of it just being a huge, another huge pile of wasted money, because that board has no clue what they're doing.
In Cliff's defense, he hasn't never experienced the Lou Bender times.
Oh, that's amazing.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, he did, yep.
I was going to say, I've only been to one Lou Bender thing, but I was impressed.
Man was catered. That was. Casserole, I believe. So if, if you guys want to do it, I'll entertain a motion, but I'd like to, personally like to see that motion include Lou Bender as a rider, but I mean, there's three different motions you can make if you want. One is to accept the consultant, one is to accept the consultant with Lou as a caveat, and one is to vote no on the consultant as a whole, but I've made my piece notes, it's completely up to the other board you, and that's why we're bringing it back to the municipalities, not deciding on it as a board.
And Virgin's doesn't have a problem with bringing Lou in?
Virgin's voted on it before Lou Bender was on the table.
Okay, so let me rephrase that then.
They're gone.
Lowell Township doesn't have a problem with that, does it?
No.
Jerry's all on board.
Jerry, Carl, Jessica, the rest of the township board's voted on it tonight, but it sounds like it's going to be close to a Virgin's out vote. But Virgin's voted on it as a consultant, and their representative is the chair of that board, and it went through, almost not even discussed at all, and unanimously.
But if we didn't, if we voted to not do the consultant, that's going to delay no?
If we vote no, Virgin's already voted yes, then Lowell Township's the tiebreaker. If they vote yes, we're stuck with it no matter what, because it's two out of three. If they vote no tonight, and we vote no tonight, then Virgin's vote doesn't matter, because it's two no's and eight yes. It's the two out of three majority municipality each gets a vote.
I'll make a motion to approve the fire authority proposal in study, and also the Lou Bender.
I'll support that.
Any other discussion on that? Sue.
Mayor DeBoer.
No.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
No.
Councilmember Yankovic.
No.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Cantfield.
Yes.
All right, does anybody want to make the motion to do it without Lou Bender, or is the council going to be a no vote? If there's no, if there's no motion to do the consultant without Lou Bender, the one with Lou Bender failed, so then we're a no vote, I'll take a no vote back to the fire authority.
The only reason I considered a yes was with Lou being involved, but it doesn't sound like it's a wise way to spend money, and if it's really not going, I was afraid that it was going to muck up the process of moving forward with getting a full-time, because the data that you've given us seems to suggest that's the smart thing to do.
And I think if a proposal came back and said, "We would like to come in here and look at your department solely to tell you if or if not you need and can support a full-time department," that would be 100% yes vote.
That's a feasibility.
Yes, yep.
You have a fishing egg for this name.
This one has going through the department's guidelines and, and protocols, and it's just so far beyond the scope of what the fire authority is supposed to do, and that's always been my contention with it. I don't think it's a bad idea for someone to come in and say, "You need full-time?" You don't need full-time. You need 10 full-time guys, you need two. Do that, and then the municipalities will go, "Okay, now we can start funding models, or we can start, you know, however it goes." But you're going to bring it in, and you're going to completely go through everything, nooks and crannies and corners, and this department in six months could be completely different. So then are we paying 22 grand again for somebody to come and consult what our new department is? We need to decide what we're going to do with full-time staffing, or if we're going to do full-time staffing, and once of those guidelines, that's a whole different set of guidelines on paid-on call. Training requirements, hour requirements, benefits, call response for the rest of the paid-on call that aren't full-time, that's what you need a consultant for, whatever your final department model is going to be. How we're sitting down there right now cannot be your final department model, because we're about to lose everybody, because you're asking around 1,000 calls a year, so. Anyways, that's just my thoughts on it. Someone would like to bill me for the counseling, submit it tomorrow, you'll get paid for me. Any other discussion on that? Item A on new business is preventative generator maintenance. Dan?
Good evening, mayor and council. So Lowell has four backup generators, one at City Hall, one at the Shepherd Dry Pump Station, one at the wastewater treatment facility, and a portable at the wastewater plant for the lift stations. They're in need of, every year they have annual preventative maintenance, the contract is up, so they take quotes from four different vendors in, in the state to perform the annual work that's oil change, oil filter, fuel filter change out, maintenance of all aspects of the system, lubrications, gear drives, the O9 yards, and then also a thorough inspection review of the switchgear and the load bag test for each generator under operating conditions there, so we can verify that things will be working when the day comes that we actually have to need them. We took four quotes, common sales 17,056 and 88 cents, Wolverine Power 17,645, Kennedy Industries 18,250, Michigan Caterpillar 21,641. The quote for Michigan Caterpillar included an infrared thermographic imagery review of the switchgear and electrical system on each of these, of the three stationary generators. This technology is used to check for overheating, things that are getting warm, to make sure connections are correct. It's a good safety feature, it's something that has never been done before in our systems. We felt that this would be a good time to do those things on these generators, make sure that they're safe, as a start to our arc flash testing review of some of our equipment that we have. I believe the way, the water plant has already had that performed for part of it, I'm not sure about the wastewater plant, but I don't believe anything like that has been done with any of the equipment at City Hall or at the Shepherd Street Station. We're looking to recommend the quote for Michigan Caterpillar for five years, this would be for a preventive maintenance program for a total of $21,640.
How come it says Michigan Caterpillar Lansing, and then it says Michigan Caterpillar Grand Rapids will be doing the work?
would be for a preventive maintenance program for a total of twenty-one thousand six hundred and forty dollars.
How come it says Michigan Caterpillar Lansing, and then it says Michigan Caterpillar Grand Rapids will be doing the work?
It's okay from Lansing, that's why I was putting Lansing in the list.
So Grand Rapids, the text will be coming out of Grand Rapids.
So which fund would these monies be coming out of?
Some would come out of wastewater, some would come out of water, and then some out of the City Hall facilities.
Dan, was part of the RFP to ask for that extra of that Caterpillar?
No, it was not asked for specifically.
Then did you give the other guys an opportunity?
Yes, they did, and none of them could do it.
Okay, thank you.
Is that imaging pretty accurate?
Yes, it is.
I was looking at the, it's pretty neat.
But something to think about too, when you start opening up these doors, you wanna service something, something's not working right, you open up to see what's in there. You can't see electricity. You don't know if everything's connected properly, everything's operating properly. That's where this arc flash comes in, of doing a thorough review of any of your electronic, electrical components when you open the cabinet doors. And again, this would be a start of that.
I wonder, how old are our generators, and when was the last time they were serviced like this?
They get serviced annually. The years on them, I don't have that information up front.
So if they've been serviced annually, who was doing the service previous?
I'm not too sure who's doing that, is it Cummins before?
The last five-year contract for the wastewater plant, the two of the wastewater plant were Cummins Bridgeway. I have no idea who you guys used for the other two.
But that was somebody you set up for the wastewater plant, correct?
Yep, yep. As a correction to Dan, the wastewater treatment plant has had a full arc flash survey.
On both the tow boat and the stationary?
The entire facility has had an arc flash survey.
Okay. Because you guys are so good, well done.
Proactive.
All right, any other questions for Dan, brother?
Is it worth it to spend the money for the imaging?
What a good question.
Am I playing on the spot?
Not entirely. Dan and I have talked about it quite a bit. It's probably not a bad idea. Arc flash can be really ugly, and unfortunately, it's not something you can see coming. This study will go a long ways to check in those kind of things. To do it constantly, that's an matter of opinion, you know, but to have it checked out once is probably a good idea.
But this price includes it every year?
Yes, for five years.
Well, if we don't see the benefit from it, we can pull it off, right, for the next wave of contracts, you're saying?
Yes, oh, yes.
We tried it.
Correct.
We just didn't get enough benefit from it to justify.
Something else is, give us a good starting point through down the road, see how things go.
No, I think it's a great idea. You find little things before they become big things by doing this. Some of this stuff happens in the HVAC business, and it's, I think it's about five thousand dollars for the cameras, so these other companies that don't offer it should get on board, and they're missing out on an opportunity there, but.
Why did ask for that information so that they could start looking?
Get one.
They pay for their equipment with this one contract, so.
Well, sometimes what it takes you is a bid with somebody else, because they stepped up, and you gotta step up for the next contract, so. Any other questions for Dan? All right, then I'll look for a motion to approve the Michigan Caterpillar quote.
I'd make a motion we approve the quote from Michigan Caterpillar for the five-year generator preventive maintenance program at a total cost of twenty-one thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars.
Support.
Discussion.
Councilmember Salzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantel?
Yes.
Mayor Edmore?
Yes, thank you. Liz Baker to the front. Showboat, it says right here, Liz Baker and Mark Munn, and Mark did not show up, so you on your own. Showboat sponsor opportunities.
Mike, Mike over there was contracted.
Now you're over there. Liz has got it, Mike, don't worry about it. Liz has got it. Okay, Mike, go ahead, Liz doesn't want to.
Okay. As part of the showboat committee continuing fundraising efforts, they have proposed possible sponsorship options for people and entities going forward. An idea the showboat committee came up with is donating, is donor naming opportunities for the showboat. These funds will be used to help with the finishing cost for the boat, along with the adjacent plaza, along with the potential care of the boat going forward. Liz Baker and Mark Munn developed a plan where, based on the amount donated, the donors can be recognized as to a particular component of the proposed boat. This plan is identical to the fundraising opportunities that were taken up by Lowell Arts during their capital campaign. I review their plan, this is a sound plan. They anticipated acknowledging the donors with some sort of a plaque on the boat as they do that. We didn't necessarily talk about naming rights, like, for example, like what you're seeing with a lot of different things nowadays, with a lot of different facilities, that, you know, a company will come in and they'll have their, you know, they'll have their, for example, like the Lowell Showboat sponsored by some corporation, or something of that age. You're seeing more and more of that, of those items coming out there, and I don't know if that's something we wanna consider, but it's something to, it's something to discuss. But we brought this information to you in your packet as a starting point for discussion. I just wanted to see where you are, what your thoughts were on it.
Okay, I already yelled at Liz about the entire boat part of it, so if you guys wanted to yell at Liz about the entire boat part of that, she's.
I don't wanna yell, I just, that was the only thing I had a hard time with.
Well, and it's just on there because we did model it after what Lowell Arts did, and they actually did do their whole gallery, and it's my understanding that the person that sponsored their whole gallery was Grand Rapids Community Foundation, or Lowell Area Community Foundation.
Yeah, I just don't want somebody putting their name on their boat, because it's the Lowell Showboat. It was discussed a long time ago. I don't want it to say Meyer, I don't want it to say Atwood, I don't want it to say any of that, because it's a community-owned boat, so that states.
It's also funded by two-point-three million tax now, because that was my first thing, was wait a minute, the bulk of the money came from the whole freaking state, and then we're gonna call it the Huntington Bank Showboat?
I think.
No.
All others?
No.
I think, well, I mean.
But I understand.
All the other things, you know, welcome to the Huntington Deck, or the whatever.
Little Caesar's Arena, Call America Park, Ford Field.
Used to be Tiger Stadium.
You did, and it used to be Joe Louis Arena.
We have ninety percent of our funding, correct? That's about where we're at?
Yeah, it's, well, you know, that's a really difficult question to answer when we really don't have solid numbers at this point, you know, for the showboat, finishing the showboat. We know the showboat's one-point-five million, we all know that, we've known that for months. But we had a great showboat meeting, and we're anticipating numbers to come in, so we kinda get an idea of where we're at with that. We kinda know where we're at with the DPW building, if pies in the sky, we're looking at about seven-hundred thousand over there, or more, and that's to do it all, which we know if we don't have that money, the only thing that we're going to do in that building would be the bathrooms to make the showboat viable, to use it as the venue that we wanna use it for. So, I mean, I think there's some other ideas that we can come up with. If you wanna take that off the plate, I mean, that's fine. Like I said, we just kinda took a model and went with it, and when we put that on there, we both thought, ooh, I don't know about that. Couple things that we did leave off that we can put on there would be the elevator, you know, that would be a good naming opportunity. The other one is the LED message board that we really wanna put on the back of the boat. So, I mean, I think there's other areas that we could put in there.
You're talking about, for the LED message board, you're talking about people can get a message that plays during events, or one that goes.
The whole board?
Is it LED lights?
Yeah, so, for instance, if, you know, there's a wedding on there, it could say congratulations.
Oh, okay.
You know, whatever.
But the board would have.
We could put all our events on there.
Yeah, but the board itself would say Huntington Bank, or Atwood, or whatever.
And then the other thing that we really don't know is how do we display these areas that we looked at? I mean, is it, is there a little plaque that says the first deck is Atwood, or whatever? Or is it on one big board that's somewhere outside, so everybody can see it when the boat's locked up and not in use?
Well, I'm just, when you go down to the Amway Grand, they have different names on the, you know, it's in such-and-such room, so it would be on the Atwood Deck, the, you know, the baby shower for Greg and Mary is on the Atwood Deck.
Do you know about that?
I don't know.
Not that Greg, the other one.
And I can save you ten thousand dollars, I own the stacks that came off the old boat, I'll donate them to you. SAG-10.
That's insane.
Oh, fun.
Regarding the, the message center, are those allowed in that part of downtown Lowell? Because I know you're not gonna have them on.
Historic, historic.
No, it's not, it's not in the historical, the boat is not in the history.
In the river?
International water.
It's not a building, you know, so, you know.
Will Eagle Lucky have an LED thing on the water?
Yes, sure.
Are we really gonna do some billboard on the showboat like that?
It's a message board that would, I think would be.
Can we do it inside instead of on the back? Well, I mean, but if you're saying, welcome to Chambers Mortgage Burning Party, when do you want, like, where do we walk in, why do we want it flashing out to Main Street? Number one, I think it's a distraction. We already have enough people that don't step for pedestrians, now they're gonna stop and read this sign. I don't, you can do whatever you want, I'm just telling you how I feel, I don't.
I think those people that stand on the corner are a distraction too, but they're allowed.
I'm gonna talk to that guy right there.
Just the commercialization on it, like a bit.
I like the message board, but if it come on the side. The message board on the side, you know, I guess I, when we all talked originally, when this all got started and we were talking, and it was gonna be called the Lowell Showboat, we'd had discussions back then about the name was gonna go on the back, so if you're putting that, if it was, if you do it in the same size where you can visibly see it, if you put your message board above it or below it, it's.
Taken away.
Yeah, it's taken away from.
Well, the message board can say the Lowell Showboat, and it can still have things underneath it, you know what I mean? It could always say the Lowell Showboat, always.
Yeah, but it, it just doesn't look, it just doesn't look right. If we're gonna replace the boat that we had, that we've always had, and put LED signage on it.
Well, we're talking about doing LED lighting on the boat as well.
Right, that'll save money.
Right.
Doesn't look any different, the message board looks a lot different.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I don't, I just don't, I don't mind the message board, but just not on the back of the boat.
I think the rooms are a good idea, like, you could go to, like, my party's at the Cliff Room, and Marty's party's at the Atwood Room, or Lighthouse, or King Millie, or whoever, but that, everybody's been pretty vocal about what the boat itself should be called, so I don't.
So you'd just like to see us take the entire boat out there?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I've had a lot of, I've had a lot of people come in, and they were extremely happy about it.
Takes a long way from our history, if we call it the Meyer Showboat, is what I was told.
Because then it came down to, well, why did I donate money, or why did I donate, if you're just gonna let a big corporation take the name, so that means, you know, my money wasn't important. It, I know that wasn't the intent, but that's what was brought to my attention.
Okay.
What do you have listed for smaller donors at a hundred dollars? Are you thinking about doing paving bricks, or you, what are you thinking about as you come out there and then you have?
We have to look at that. I do know, I believe that Lowell Arts identified all of their small donors, so we would like to do that as well.
Yeah, I didn't know if you were gonna do some, like, Sheriff Street Repairing Pavers and Lehman, and whatever, you could do that.
Isn't there some discussion about putting under.
Heating?
Heating under the Riverwalk there, so then you could put in.
Or paving bricks.
I'm just saying, I have a brick at the library, it's nice.
I mean, I, I don't know, I just don't see what you're gonna do with the wall, or.
No, yeah, we need to, that's why I said, we haven't really, you know, we've looked at some things, but how are we going to display all of this? I mean, even at the Engelhardt Library, they have a wall, but trying to come up with something really cool that people can see. I mean, I'd like people to be able to see it outside, because lots of times the boat's locked, you're not gonna be able to go in there, you know? So you want people to be able to see it all the time.
Maybe like where one of the garage doors are filled in and do bricks like that, because you're gonna.
There's not enough, I don't think there's enough face on the showboat to make that happen.
What about those, them at the front of the Van Andover for the victims, those plaques, the leaning whatever, right at the entrance, you know, when you're walking out to the boat, it's like, oh, these people donated, and these people donated, they don't have to do anything with it, they're just there, and then they're present.
Just doing a quick math that looks at your trend rate on this eight-hundred thousand dollars just here, so what's your big goal?
The Chamber Building? The DPW Building?
Yeah, I think, well, you know, like I said, until we get the numbers of the showboat really sealed up, we really don't know.
Mike, are you still on the phone?
I'm still there, yeah.
Okay. The boat's being built currently, correct?
Right, they're carrying equipment as a state.
Okay, and we're still on track then to have here April May?
Something like it, yeah. I think we gave them use first in a, it's like a worst-case scenario.
Okay, and then have you started to send out full sets of plans for bidding?
No, what we've done to this point is we've got, we've sent out, we have about eighty-five, ninety percent plans that we've sent out for estimates, and then once we get those estimates, we're going, you know, we're gonna look at that, and that's gonna give us an idea, but we also like, like we'd like you directed us to do, we will be coming back to you before we send the plans to go out for bid for GT.
Okay.
So I think you have to decide if we do that in a council meeting, or another thing that you do.
Maybe.
I think we'll do it at a public forum, so as many people.
Can see that.
Yeah, like we did the design day for the rec park, that was a thing where anybody could come to it and spend as much time as they wanted, and when we had, even when we had the designers in here at that meeting, that was a whole separate, that should have been a whole separate thing, where people could come and go. We can't expect everyone to wanna come see us on a Monday night at seven PM. And a lot of people care about this boat a lot more than they care about the five or bust or two every Monday. You, no, I, you need to have a public forum, maybe two or three of them, and give as many people a chance to come and yell at you as they can, you know what I mean?
I just think you have to be careful. I mean, we've worked on this project for a really long time, we've had a lot of people that's really been passionate about it, so we feel that what the direction that we're moving in is the right direction.
To do it as an unveiling instead of a public forum.
But I mean, you could keep having public forums and public forums, and then you're back square one again. We don't have time for that.
I know.
Our deadline is December one, that's when we wanna open that showboat, so we wanna make sure that we're doing what we said we were gonna do, and gotta remember, we.